All right, everyone, I see it's four o'clock, so I'm going to call the April 26, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
President.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
President.
Mr. Johnson?
President.
Ms. Ackerman?
Are we expecting Terry?
I haven't heard to the contrary, so she may be joining us shortly.
And myself, Ms. Bates, here.
Okay, thank you. I'll read the consent agenda. Town accountant warrants for April 15, 2021, April 26, 2021, minutes to approve for March 15, 2021, March 22, 2021, and a gifted acceptance from the Friends of Sleepy Hollow Cemetery, Inc., $4,000 to the Town of Concord for the revitalization of the H. Thurston Handley Commemorative Garden in Sleepy Hollow Cemetery. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, including Terry Ackerman has joined us. The chair so declares. The town manager's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a brief report tonight. Just a couple of quick items that we're working on. As I know, we have a draft library reopening plan. Just, I include that in the packet just to show you that the supervisors of the library are continuing their work on planning to reopen for public. We don't have a date certain yet. We are working on filling some vacancies that really are needed before we can move forward with reopening at the staff level. Additionally, we are going to be moving forward with the search for permanent director. But, just like I said, I wanted you to show that the plans for reopening are still ongoing. Just a quick item, Chief O'Connor and I issued a very, very brief joint statement after the Chauvin verdicts, and we did post that through news notices on the town's website. And in the statement, we, you know, we reiterated our condemnation of the actions of those officers, which we had stated last summer shortly after the incident. And, you know, I think used as another opportunity to highlight how hard the Concord Police Department works on de-escalation training and treating others with dignity and respect, so those circumstances can be avoided to the greatest extent possible here. Couple of quick items, update items in CPW, the roadway, the Rose Project is moving forward. Primarily, 1.3 miles along Peter Springs neighborhood, they just did that water main replacement we talked about a few times. It's not allowed to be paved, and water main flushing will be starting pretty soon. So we'll see that happening. I'm gonna skip ahead and just as a, there's some, due to the Bobo Link breeding, there'll be some trail modifications at Madison Field. And CPC applications are, will be up on the website, I think, this week. And they'll be due back to CPC by September 17 to 4:00 p.m. And Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, I know there's an issue that came up with the neighbors of, along the Cove section of White Pond about fencing and what they thought they were going to get from a 2017 concept design versus what's that, versus what the last thing MassDOT T. said. So that was kind of a late-breaking thing for us as well, that MassDOT T. had somewhat changed its mind, so we are continuing, so we are now engaged in the dialogue with the neighbors and MassDOT T. trying to sort that out. But I don't have a specific solution yet, but we are working on it. And then the final thing was, we did include some FAQs about the middle school building committee that we, that Carrie Lefler and I put together, kind of as a draft, because we were, as a committee, the MSBC had been working on some information to educate the community, but kind of on an ongoing basis. And so, like, our architect took the first pass at the FAQs about the building, and Carrie and I took the first pass at FAQs about the financing. We've got some feedback on it, and so, I know, and Carrie is here, we, we did, you know, part of the information is based on input from the school department, especially, you know, the numbers that were based on the 2019 town meeting, those numbers are received from the school department, that they were, they were the original authors of those. The projections on debt service, and then the impacts of the additional million were Carrie's information based on, based on a formula received from our financial advisors, that she can talk more specifically about. And then the information about the PBD school site reuse was my primary contribution to the document. So, like I said, we got some feedback on that, and we do know it needs some clarification, and we're happy to do so now or later. And then the other thing is, in that same item, and I apologize, I thought I, I thought I had included, when I assembled the PDF, I thought I had put in the MSBA letter saying that we were not invited to the, to the next round of process for the middle school, once again, I think for the fourth consecutive time, we were, we were turned down. But I received that letter late last week. So Carrie, I don't know if you want to talk about the formula?
Sure, I would like to make one clarification. So thank you, Stephen, and good afternoon. Specifically, with respect to the information that was included in the FAQs relative to the, the projected cost of an additional incremental million dollars worth of spending for the, we had included at median for a 20-year amortization that the impact would be $7.32 per, per year, per million, and it is actually closer to $10.23. And thankfully, we had several sets of eyes looking at that, and unfortunately, that slipped past me. I did use the financial advisors model to, to come up with that, and, you know, sometimes when you use somebody else's spreadsheets to do your own work, you don't necessarily know where all of the hidden cells are. And unfortunately, there, there was an issue. And so I did earlier today ask the financial advisor to take a look at that, and also just to take a look at all of the other calculations that I made to verify that those were correct and accurate, and they did verify that. So, so we do need to update the million-dollar incremental cost section, and we will do that before we issue another draft of the document.
Thank you. Susan?
Yeah, I'm glad you included this information, but I did have a couple of questions, and I think it might bear more discussion than we want to take time for today. I look back in the, it was March 23, 2020, it was when the building committee decided on option three, and in the numbers there, there is an escalation, escalation of 6% that was already included, and that was for two years. So my questions are, how, you know, what's remaining to be included, if that's accurate, is the escalation for the third year that were delayed because of COVID? And what were the actual escalations for those two years? And the other kind of related question I had in thinking about funding for this project, I didn't know if there was any way, the operating expenses are going to be a half a million dollars or more, less, with one building than with two, and I didn't know if there was any way, and I, I'm glad Carrie's here, that that could be contributed toward debt service if we're looking at this number, which is substantially above the $100 million ceiling that we talked about as a group a few weeks ago.
So, about the first part, and I guess, you know, I think this probably merits a broader discussion as an agenda item at some point. I know the Middle School Building Committee will be talking about this Thursday, and so there'll be some follow-up items there. But just very briefly, like I said, I think the, the, several numbers have been used in different contexts, and so, as I've said, I tried to go back to the beginning and not get not only the, the numbers that were stuck, that were stated, but also the context in which they were stated. And, you know, based on, and then asked those, asked the finance department in school, for the schools, you know, what they thought that progression looked like. And I, but I think I want to separate, there's a budget discussion, and then there's an estimate discussion. And so, there may be escalation built into the estimate, but we were looking at, what would the budget be if we applied the same rates of escalation that were, that were estimated, that were projected to the original, you know, projected cost of, and it was originally 90 million, but there was never really a hard number. 90 million was used as a placeholder number, but, but during that meeting, and I wasn't here for it, I watched it on M M N, it was stated several times that, that was just a back, like, in pencil back of the envelope, because you weren't, we weren't really going to know until we get to the end of feasibility and then really schematic design, what the, what the actual, like, what a good estimate really is. So, so on, on that part, I want to kind of separate what's presented as an estimate versus what was discussed as a budget. But like I said, I think there's, there's a lot of layers to this that maybe a separate agenda discussion would be helpful. And in terms of the operating stuff, I mean, you know, insofar as if they don't use that, those funds to offset increases in the, in the following year, could that be less money levied that would then go to debt service? Conceptually, yes, but I don't know that we would be able to earmark that unless Carrie, you see it differently.
No, I, I think if, in fact, the, the total school budget was a half a million dollars less, that money certainly could be then moved into the debt service budget.
Thank you. Carrie?
Well, yes, thank you, Carrie and Stephen, for presenting this. And that's really good to know that if the school committee were to agree, maybe that the guideline would, in the future, you know, work out some way that their guideline would include that half a million of their budget going to debt service. I know that a committee can't bind a future committee, but if they had the intention of it, that would be really helpful. I did a quick back-of-the-envelope, because half a million times 20 years is, you know, $10 million that we would save on the project, or if it's 30 million, you know, et cetera. So I think that would be really, really a helpful thing. And also, as Matt and others have said, I think, I think we do need a broader discussion as soon as possible on our agenda to talk about how we're going to finance this. Should we look at higher views or fees? What about PBD? And thanks, Stephen, for including those options in the FAQs. Also, to hear more about the numbers and the context, because my impression was the 90 million that was discussed at that town meeting already included the construction escalation for it to be bid all the way up to, I think, 2023. So I'm still a little bit confused about why we're again adding the escalation. And I think you had a really good phrase at that middle school building committee meeting, Stephen, you said "truth in advertising." I think that's absolutely key. So I'm glad we're talking about it, and I really would like to see a discussion at the Select Board relatively soon.
Good. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I could comment.
Sure.
So first of all, I'm a little frustrated that there isn't a discussion today. I requested one, and it just seems obvious that, you know, with a big increase in the budget to the school and the offing, that this is something that we should weigh in on. But then, secondly, I am glad that the numbers for the incremental per million costs have been revised, and, you know, they were understated by about 30%, you know, and to some degree, the, the decisions that the school building committee made last week, you know, were predicated in part on that number. But the other thing that they were predicated on was that notion of this being due to an escalation, to escalation in costs, that a budget should be increased to 108 million. And I believe that there's been a lot of good information provided, why that should not be the case. Most, you know, importantly is, you know, that we now have actual estimates, you know, for a buildable project. And so, you know, going back to the town meeting and re-projecting from, from those dates is kind of a speculative exercise. But all of that said, I'm just curious, will you, in the revision of this FAQ, also be restating that first item?
Well, we'll talk about that on Thursday. And like I said, I want to be clear, I, it's, I asked for the originator of the, of the numbers to give, to, for the projection, so I don't want it to be, you know, I certainly presented that as, you know, when we discussed it at the Middle School Building Committee meeting, but I think I did turn it over to Jared Stanton from the school department and said, well, these are really Jared's numbers, so I can't, it was not my understanding that escalation was already built in. When I listened to the discussion, I didn't catch that, it's possible I missed it, but either way, I said, Jared, you know, what would that, what is that worth? And I said plus three years, because we really, we've been talking with two years of escalation, we really lost a year on the project. So that was, you know, kind of how that all materialized, and we can certainly talk about that on, on Thursday. But I'm happy to revise the FAQs based on where the project is. It's really, the point of the, the point of the FAQ is to reflect, you know, what is, based on how well we know it. And I think, you know, Matt, just to be clear, I agree, a lot of this is a speculative exercise, including the estimates that we're getting at the level of design we're at. And I just think that that's one of the things that needs to be, before we latch on to, you know, closely to, to specific numbers, there's so many unknowns, including what escalation is going to do, and so I'm always advocating for a conservative approach to escalation, because we have no idea what's going to happen in the marketplace in the next two years while we're in design before we have, in, in bid process. So that's really the thing that I'm trying to caution against, is there's still a lot of unknowns here as, as we move forward, and what's the right approach? And the committee may decide that the approach that we, the approach we chose last week may not be the right one to go forward with, but I felt it was important to have a discussion about what's our approach towards the budget going to be.
I would just say that, given that all of this, there are so many open-ended things, this is really, seems like a rough time to be increasing the project's scope, when, you know, there are so many unknowns about possible future escalation and costs. So, you know, I, I guess, again, I gotta leave it at that, we don't really have a way that we can, you know, make a motion or act upon this as a board, but I hope we can get this sorted out, at least in the building committee meeting on Thursday.
Just a quick follow-up to that, which I forgot to mention, but Matt just reminded me. I think there were two things going on. The price seems to have gone up besides the auditorium and the gym, possibly because of construction inflation, but I think that was already counted. But also, because the square footage went up from 125,000 to 100, I forget the other number, 143,000. So I think someone needs to really explain in why the cost is going up out of all those different factors, and hopefully they can explain that on Thursday night.
Yeah, I, I think if you, if you watch the arc, if you track the arc of the project, I mean, 125,000 that was cited in 2019, you know, those are rough numbers. And the egg plan that the design subcommittee recommended to the full committee, that was then endorsed by the full committee, was 143,000 square feet. That was before any, and that really drew a lot of the community feedback we received on the gymnasium and the auditorium. Was that, was that planned?
And I think that is the reason for the increased cost, not the construction inflation, but I'm not sure, but I think so. And if that's the case, let's just say so.
I, I don't think it's any one thing, though, Terry. I think that, that's, that's the reason why there's multiple layers that we have to go through to get to the discussion.
All right, that's what we have to sort out.
Any other comments or questions here? Can you hand up? Okay, Jane?
Yep, if I could chime in here. You know, it's interesting listening to this conversation, since I've participated both as a parent, not immediately recently, but within the last 10 years in the middle school, and also, since my husband was a former school committee member, I obviously have heard many sides of this. Having said that, the one piece of information I would love to see, find out when it's going to be revised, would be the housing protection numbers, because I know that in 2015, when we produced them the first, last time, they were roundly discussed as a reason, at that point, it was a reflection on the high school, and that, that we were an aging population, not a younger population. My instinct, given experiences and perspective from, you know, my seat today, is that we're likely to see a boom or an increase in younger population as parents with younger children move into town, not out of town. So I want to just, you know, we're building a school for, for the, for the long term, not the short term. It's painful in the short term, obviously. There's no, I don't know any way to, whether it's 100 million or 108, to make that less painful. But, you know, it, and it's, it's hard to keep the eyes on the, the big picture when it's the taxpayers over the next decade who will bear a lot of the burden initially. But to do it, I mean, I'm, I'm just reflecting back on all the different things that happened after the high school was built, because it wasn't a complete project, because we left certain pieces off. And that was a painful space for a lot of people in town. So it's not an answer, but I just, I don't, I don't think staring at specific numbers and, and thinking they're hard and fast right now is probably going to serve the teachers, or more importantly, the students in 15 years, as well as thinking about the needs of, of the school age population.
Okay. Let me just add at this point, what, let me, before I make a comment, Stephen, were there other components to your town manager's report? No?
That was it.
Okay. There is no doubt that the Select Board will be talking about this in the future. Let me just say that we did receive a letter after the revised packet was sent out, summarizing the FINCOM's meeting on Thursday night. That letter went to the Middle School Building Committee and to the Select Board. There, and I was going to comment on, and if not now, later in the FINCOM liaison report and miscellaneous correspondence, but let me just say that that letter was written on behalf of the FINCOM to both the middle school and to the Select Board, where there was, for those of you who haven't seen the recording of that meeting, there was a very robust discussion about holding to the $100 million budget line as the top number, and asking the middle school committee to go back and re-evaluate their vote from the last meeting. There was also discussion about this escalation cost being built in, and whether it should have been built in for the additional amount that had been added to the 100 million at the last budget. There, and there was some disagreement in the committee about including that in the final letter, but it did go in the final letter nonetheless. I would just caution that when that gets updated and talked about, and some additional information provided in the FAQ, that we're clear about what that escalation percentage was at the, being talked about initially versus what the recent experience is by the MSBA, so that hopefully we'll see that information more clearly, or that will be included in the discussion. The third part of the letter that came in from the FINCOM, that was also sent to the Select Board, in addition to the Middle School Building Committee, dealt with asking the Select Board to support any additional, to identify any additional funding sources, should the budget be greatly increased. So I think I've tried to summarize the major points that were included in that letter. So no doubt, we will have not one, but probably multiple future discussions on this topic. So if there are no other comments about the town manager's report, I'm going to move on. The next item on our agenda today is for the Noticement Tent to Sell and Convert Use for the Monument Street Parcel 1371-4, and this is converted use out of 61A, Chapter 41. So we did receive a letter on this, I don't know if anyone wants to comment further on this. I, I think the major point of the letter to the Select Board was that, at this point, the town is willing to pass its right, first refusal, just because the, if nothing else, because the $3.5 million price tag is well beyond anything we would be prepared to put forward at this point. So, so there's no other discussion, do I hear a motion?
Move to not exercise the town's right of first refusal on Monument Street Parcel 1371-4.
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. The next item is the review of the 2021 general obligation bond issue, the potential refunding opportunity and vote maximum useful life. And I think Carrie's here to speak to that, and she always has good news, almost always lately, on these issues. So Carrie?
Thank you. Good afternoon again. As the chair mentioned, we are preparing for our 2021 general obligation bond sale. There is a memo in your packet that details the items to be included in this bond, but in total, we're looking to permanently finance $4,605,000 worth of general fund capital projects and an additional $3.15 million worth of enterprise fund capital projects. You will recall that one of the requirements in getting ready for a bond sale is to make sure that our bond counsel can provide a legal opinion stating that the town has the authority to borrow funds for the intended purposes. And one of the items that regularly comes to you on an annual basis is a request that you vote the maximum useful life of any equipment to be included in the bond sale, so that bond counsel can determine the appropriate statutory authority to borrow these, borrow for these particular pieces of equipment. And so in your packet, there is a list of items, pieces of equipment to be purchased, and the maximum useful life, and I'll, I'll detail those in a moment. But I just want to mention, because this is something that typically comes up, particularly when we say a maximum useful life is five years for, for a certain item, and you might think, gee, only five years. The, the maximum useful life, I, I really wish they would call it the minimum useful life, because it is the minimum amount of time that we will have these items in service. And the, the purpose here is so we're not, we're not borrowing, paying for something over 10 years when we're only going to use it for five years. So it, it's really, even though it's called the maximum useful life, I think it's, it's helpful to think of it in terms of, we are going to be using the, these pieces of equipment for at least this amount of time. And so for the record, I, I will just run through this quickly. We have an ambulance replacement for $275,000 with a maximum useful life of 10 years, energy recovery units at the Energy recovery units at the various schools, and this is the Concord Public School System, only $690,000, 25-year maximum useful life. AC chiller replacement at Willard for $40,000 with a five-year useful life. Infrastructure replacement at CPS, $100,000, five-year life. And I, I will note here that this really is a, in the event, would only be used in the event that something catastrophic happens at one of the middle schools. This is intended for the, for as long as, as we are using the existing middle schools, a pot of money that is available to replace equipment and other infrastructure in the event that it is needed. If for some reason we did spend this $100,000 and we tore down the, the school building that this was associated with, we would have to immediately pay that money back. And that will be noted in the, the legal opinion that we receive. Continuing on, we have AV equipment at the library for $275,000 for five years. This is the town's contribution to be added to monies that the Library Corporation will also be using to, to fund this project. We have furniture, fixtures and equipment at the library, $275,000. Again, this is the town's contribution, and the Library Corporation will be, will be contributing to this as well. The final is underground conduit for $150,000 with a 20-year useful life. There is a rather lengthy motion that is included in the packet, and unfortunately, it does need, need to be made in its entirety for the record. Right now, we're thinking that we are going to sell bonds the week of May 17. That is subject to, to move a few days out, depending upon when we receive the legal opinion and when we receive our credit rating review. But we do have our rating conference scheduled for the, for May 4, so that's coming up shortly. Based on the preliminary estimates, the estimated, how, how the market is doing now, our financial advisor estimates that we will receive a premium of approximately $630,000 for the general fund portion of the bond issue, $492,000 for the water enterprise fund portion, and $1,000 for the broadband enterprise fund portion. So regardless of what we receive for the estimate, for the, once we pay the costs associated with the issuance, we use 100% of the remainder of the premium to resize the bond issue. So we're not issuing debt for any portion that would be covered by premium. We also are preparing to take bids to refund or refinance the remaining portion of the 2011 general obligation bond issue. We have 1.3 million outstanding. A million of that is for smart grid improvements and 300,000 for water system improvements. Based on the estimates provided by our financial advisor, we are anticipating saving by, through this refinance, approximately $98,000 or 7.57% of the, the remainder of the debt service. Typically, we, we move forward with the refunding anytime we assume that the savings is 3% or greater. So this looks like a good refund, savings opportunity, even though the numbers are small. But it, it's still, is still worth pursuing at this time. And so there's, there's no official vote that is required by the select board to pursue a refunding opportunity, but I'd like to make you aware of that. And, and you can let me know if you have any reservations. If, if you don't, we would intend to move forward with that. The refunding will be for the same existing term, so we don't extend it over additional years. And if for some reason the refunding is determined not to be feasible, we wouldn't move forward with it, and there's no expense to the town. So it's, it's really a win-win situation. So at, at this time, I will conclude my presentation and open it up to questions if there are any.
Any questions for Carrie? Matt?
Yeah, what are the transaction costs with the refinancing if we proceed? Just, I'm curious, because of course, you know, you have that 98,000 savings, but I assume there's an upfront cost to, you know, rebond, right?
So there, there is a, the financial advisor will have a fee, a, a small fee there. There, there probably would be a small fee associated with just having bond counsel take a, a quick look at it. We might have some underwriter costs associated with that. But they, they would all be small, and we would not, we would not be receiving a bill for any of those unless we moved forward with the refinancing.
Are we talking like 10,000 bucks, or?
Yeah, I would say that at the most.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Let's see, let me see if I can see. No? Okay, so I've already warned Susan to have her water handy or take a deep breath, because she does have to read this motion in entirety. So I think I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Move that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of, one, the 275,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed September 13, 2020, Article 11; two, the 900,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed April 10, 2019, Article 12; three, the $550,000 library equipment borrowing authorized by a vote of the town passed April 8, 2019, Article 7, Item Number 6; and four, a portion of the $1 million borrowing allocable to telecommunications equipment authorized by a vote of the town passed April 26, 2017, Article 24, is hereby determined pursuant to GL Chapter 44, 7, 1, to be as follows. Ambulance number two, replacement, $275,000, maximum useful life, 10 years. Energy recovery units for CPS, $690,000, maximum useful life, 25 years. AC chiller replacement, Willard, $40,000, maximum useful life, five years. Infrastructure replacement CPS, $100,000, five years. Library audiovisual equipment, 275,000, maximum useful life, five years. Library furniture and equipment, 275,000, maximum usable life, five years. And telecom, underground conduit, 150,000, maximum usable, useful life, 20 years.
I'll do the easy part. Second.
Okay, I'm just, um, do we need to read the, the last paragraph?
No, you, you do not. That is just a certification for the clerk of the board to make.
Okay, very good. Okay, Matt already seconded, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you. Good work, Susan. Okay, the, and thank you, Carrie, for walking us through this.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the select board schedule for reviewing warrant article positions. Obviously, we have two public hearings this week, tomorrow night and on the 29th. I'm a, I have placed our discussion of those warrant articles on the May 3 agenda. And what I'd like to propose is that for the May 6 public hearing, that we would place it on the agenda for May 10. And for the May 11th and 13th public hearings, that we would place it on the select board agenda for May 17. And I've scheduled it that way as opposed to immediately following the public hearings, because sometimes they have gone on for, been quite late. And we also were on a totally different timeline last year in terms of trying to get this to the public, FinCom, our recommendations completed for the FinCom report deadline to be published. And so we had a little more time to work on that this year. So is everyone comfortable with that? Yeah, okay, I'm not seeing any objections, so I don't think we need to vote on that. I just wanted general consensus. Terry, I can't see you in my window right now. Are you comfortable with that?
Uh, I think so. If, if, I just want to make sure I understand. So what you're saying is, for each of the public hearings, at the following select board meeting, it would be on our agenda to discuss and?
That's correct.
Take, are we going to be probably taking position on pretty much all of the articles then?
Yes, yes. Yep, okay, all right. And then following up on that, the next item, it says assign select board narratives on warrant articles. My intention was not to assign them tonight, but to talk through what the process is here. I think we need to all begin with looking at our liaison assignments and the warrant articles and the committees that have warrant articles that are coming forward to the town meeting. So if, if you have a warrant article, if you have a committee that's proposing a warrant article, then as we're listening through the, the public hearing meetings, we should also be, each of us should be listening carefully to the public comments as we would be anyway. But with the idea that it is likely you may be the person who is writing the narrative that will go in the town meeting materials book that was produced last year and will be again produced this year. And I say you, you individually likely would be the individual. I think that is something that we'll discuss at each of the subsequent meetings, but i- in some cases, um, it just may, it may balance out better if we share a couple of assignments. But in general, I think we should be listening with an ear for warrant articles that are specific to our liaison assignments. Are there any comments or questions about that?
Well, I don't know if this is a separate item, but I'm just curious for Tuesday night's event. I mean, it seems that we do have at least one warrant article that we need to present.
Yes.
Are, are you planning to do it, or?
I'm prepared to do it.
Okay. So I was checking on that.
Yeah, good. Okay.
I kind of looked through the table of contents a couple of times. I'm trying to get a sense of, it seems as though many of these articles are not going to need any select board narrative. But maybe I'm wrong about that. So, um, I started from 17, 17, 18, 19. Okay. Likely there'll be a narrative, okay. Right. And then, um, 31 through 35, which includes some planning board warrant articles. 37, 38, 39, 40 and 41. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other?
So we just put in our bids?
Well, I think it'll be, yeah, I think in, in the main, if you're liaison to that committee that has, so, you know, a warrant coming forward, you're probably likely the person who's going to volunteer to do that. But there are some that, that don't fall neatly into that category, or in some cases, you know, we may look to each other and say, you know, look, I've got eight of them. Will you take two of these? Yeah, that kind of thing. So that's sort of what I'm thinking. We're not quite ready to do that.
When would you want these write-ups?
So that, I think at the next, by the next board meeting, we'll have that date. It'll be after, clearly, it'll be after, um, our, the deadline when we have to have all of them is after the, our meeting on the 17th. So we'll, we'll, it'll be sometime, that'll be the outside deadline for those. And then it depends, um, you know, last year, I think we had an opportunity to come together again after we wrote them to just see if there were some helpful feedback that we could give each other in terms of some changes and whether or not we want, it's likely we probably will do that again. Let me just, yeah. And I think, um, in some cases, I guess the other comment I'll make, having recently reviewed all this to the best I could, in some cases, certain warrant articles, but a limited number, require what I'm going to call a really full narrative, just because of the nature of either what we're hearing from the public or what we think it takes to understand that particular warrant article. But in the main, um, I think short, you know, shorter narratives. In some cases, I, I looked at the materials book last year, and they were either a quarter a page or a half a page. And that was just fine for the nature of the article and the discussion or the degree of understanding that we felt was evident in the public hearing and other discussions. So just as another lens to be thinking about this, is your, go forward with the task eventually. Okay, any other good questions or comments? That was helpful, Jane. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a select board appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. So I, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that, you know, the vote from town meeting was certified by the state, which is why we're now moving on, on this. And so we have several appointments included in the committee nominations tonight for people who've already indicated their interest. But we, the, the bylaws also include a, a select board appointment to the trust. And so we need to make that determination this evening, or at least we should probably proceed, just because we're trying to get this committee populated.
And I also note that, that one of the committee seats is the town manager.
Correct. Yep.
So is there some relationship there, though, to APP 10, Section 7, where it says that the town manager won't be a member of a committee?
So, that's a good question. The, this is by statute, mass statute, that allows for this. I don't know. That's my response to it.
Yeah, I, I think that was somewhat, I mean, the bylaw sets that, and I would say it's just a bylaw supersedes the APP. Uh, and then the other thing is, I, I do serve, I'm on the middle school building committee, for example, and capital planning town, you know, task force is task force. And I mean, town managers do from time to time serve on committees. I just don't think, it's not a great fit always, and, and so, um, you know, but I think in this case, it's appropriate, certainly, especially as we get it off the ground. But we can, you know, because right now, a lot of the funding that eventually, until there's a, an independent house funding stream through one of our special acts, right now, the, the funding for, for Roush Trust Committee to consider would, are right now under the jurisdiction of town manager select board approval. So I think certainly in this go of it, we would want to have that connection.
So I would just add that, So I would just add that where the town manager does sit on other committees, if, and I think I've got this correct. It's usually because in the charge, we have designated the town manager as being essential to the committee membership.
And so that's, so this charge does reflect that?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I think, I think this charge says something like nothing in this charge will.
Prevent.
Prevent the town manager from serving on the committee. I think, I think it's in our packet, the language of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah. And having been the liaison to that committee that worked on this. That particular language is, was included specifically because there's also language in the statute that says you must be a Concord citizen. And so in order to. Allow town managers as they, as they do from various towns depending on their bylaws. That, that was the language that was chosen to say that even if our town manager lives somewhere else. All right, so I guess. Any other questions about this? Otherwise, if there's a nomination for a select board appointee to the trust.
I have a, I have a question.
Sure, Terry.
So Linda, you served on this study committee that put together this language. And you've served on many housing committees for many years. You obviously have. A huge knowledge of housing experience, more than probably any of the rest of us. So do you want to be the select board nominee for this committee? Or are you feeling like you need a break from housing or are you busy enough or, you know?
Well. Yeah, thank you for asking that question. I do think I, you know, have some. Fair number of years in terms of serving the town and the various committees related to this. And if, since the, since we're talking about this at this point in the year in my tenure as chair. I would be open to serving in this going forward. If we were talking about this last. July, I might have given you a different answer.
So you would be open to it? Is it, is it something you would like to do? I, I think that you're, you know, supremely well qualified. There's no question about it.
No, I, I, I think I would enjoy it, yeah.
Okay.
I say that knowing that I'll be giving up a couple key. Important committees that have also required a great deal of time. As we move forward.
I think the timing of the clock, right? As you said, I think I'd be, I think I'd enjoy it was ominous. Is that going to be a sign?
Yeah, we did hear the clock again. Susan?
Well, that being the case, I would move to nominate Linda Escobedo. To the Affordable Housing Trust. I guess that's not a voting thing though, is it? Because I'm just nominating.
It's an appointment.
Oh, okay. Move to appoint Linda Escobedo to the Affordable Housing Trust. Second.
Okay, will the chair please call the roll? Thank you. Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I will say that there's a lot to figure out for this committee going forward as well. All right, so I think we're ready for committee nominations.
Jennifer Hurley Wales of 66 Old Marlborough Road to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee. For a term to expire on April 30, 2024. Bridget Neal of 241 Prairie Street. Anne Fortier of 150 Old Picard Road. And Paul Horwitz of 173 Hayward Mill Road to the Board of Registars for terms to expire April 30, 2024. Carlin Reed of 83 Wits End Road to the PEG Access Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30, 2024. Town Manager Stephen Crane, Keith Bergman of 56 White Avenue. And Michael Lawson of 1695 Lowell Road to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. For terms to expire April 30, 2023.
Okay, and before we move on, I'm going to back us up to. My appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. Can we just say for two years, just to be clear?
Sure, move to.
Just if we can revisit that motion, I guess.
Okay, under, on the, under the appointments?
Yes, under the appointment.
Okay, all right. Move to appoint Linda Escobedo of 16, I'm sorry, Linda, can you tell me your address?
I don't think you need that for this.
Oh, okay. Select Board Representative to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. For a term to expire in two years. Or shall I say that April 30, 2023? April 20, 30, 2023. Move to accept the town manager's appointment of Mara Krishan Tilly of 65 Woodland Road. To the Board of Assessors for a term to expire on April 30, 2024. Second.
Yeah, okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. I'm sorry, I, I guess Susan, I. Wasn't clear in my instructions and I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask that we go back to item number nine, the select board appointment to Affordable Housing Trust. Because we voted on that. And re-vote on the entire.
On just on number nine?
Yeah, let's rescind the formal, the former vote and then re-vote adding the dates. I'm sorry, I'm sorry for the confusion, but that, that, I think that will keep us in the clear.
That's okay. It's important, these details matter. Move to appoint Linda Escobedo.
Let's rescind the motion for the.
Oh, rescind the vote.
The former vote, yeah.
The former vote, appointing Linda Escobedo to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Is there a second? Okay, and, and will the clerk? Yeah.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you, everyone. And now a new, a new motion.
Okay, move to appoint Linda Escobedo as Select Board Representative. To the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire April 30, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Susan, sorry to put you through that, but.
No, no problem.
Let's see, I think we're ready for the committee liaison reports.
I'm not going to go first tonight.
Are you feeling okay?
I have to gather my, my, my information here.
How about that? So Matt, does that mean you're going to jump in?
Sure, I can jump in. So I think I'll start off with the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. Who ran that virtual Patriots Day celebration. And I believe there's now over a thousand views of the video that was produced, a 20 minute video. I think that we did a great job in recruiting Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee members. If you judge by the quality of the readings that they did. You think that we hired professional readers. And some other nice touches there as well. So congratulations to them as well as the Minuteman Media Network. That really did a lot of work to put that together. Now, the committee is turning its attention to Memorial Day. And indeed, they're actually looking for input from us. Unfortunately, I only just heard, you know, got a request for that over this weekend. About the kind of event that they could hold at Memorial Day. I think, you know, we're still under Phase 4 of the opening part, reopening part one. So that limits outdoor activities to 150 people. And so there's a whole question of how one could actually assure that. And so, you know, they, they're considering the possibility of either something like they did last year. You know, a quiet commemoration. Or, you know, if there is some possibility to do something more, that, that's also. You know, something they would look at. The, the other thing is that the Concord Independent Battery has gotten some requests, including a request to commemorate the Friday before in Concord. So again, I think that's something we're going to see. So that's from their side of things. The next bit of news is from the Housing Authority. Unfortunately. Martin Corona withdrew from the process, having gotten a position at the Concord, at the Boston Housing Authority. So that leaves us short, a executive director. The Housing Authority will be meeting this Thursday evening to, you know, at 5 o'clock before the, the finance hearing. To discuss next steps. So that, that's a blow. Then the Middle School Building Committee, of course, we've had significant discussion up until now, but just for context, the Middle School Building Committee did meet and they. You know, voted for that, well, for the use of the design bid build instead of. CM at risk, construction manager at risk for the build method. And they also voted to direct the architect to show. Design options that would increase the size of the gym and the auditorium within a $108 million, not to exceed number. And so of course, there's been a lot of discussion subsequent to that decision, you know, about the terms for that and everything. And so there will be another meeting this Thursday morning to continue the discussions, perhaps looking at those, those design options. And then the Community Preservation Committee met and discussed further the conditions on the projects. That was the main thing that they, they were working on at this stage. So that's my report.
Thank you, Matt. Who would like to go next? Jane?
I'm going to be very brief because the NRC was the only one of my committees that met last week. And it was a, it was a relatively. Simple, I shouldn't say, it was, it was a long meeting, but not, not a lot of big decisions. The middle sex school. Turf is still being, has, has been held over to the next meeting. And the only certification, or the only, the town of Concord received emergency certifications for 180 Cambridge Turnpike for a beaver dam breach. The beavers have been very active. We had a couple of floods. And beaver deceivers are being put into play in a number of spots. And that was probably the most interesting part of the discussion from a layman's perspective, because I learned what a beaver deceiver is. And in fact, a beaver deceiver allows the beavers to live perfectly happily where they are. But it, it, it abates or eliminates the blockage of a, of a river or a, you know, a moving water body. Therefore, the flood or the still pond that would otherwise be created isn't. But it doesn't have any negative effect according to our natural resources director. On, on the beaver themselves. And then the 177 Barnes Hill Road, which is one of the only two. After the fact. Town invoked remediation requirements, was finally accepted and moved forward. That's been a fairly contentious piece on the docket of the NRC. And I was just struck from, by the fact that we are, we're such a, a natural resources caring community. That this was the first such an issue in, I think it was 25 years. So. But that's now been concluded. And other than that, I think there'll be more at other meetings.
Thank you, Jane. Terry?
Okay, I had several meetings in the last two weeks. First one was CMLP. Employees have started returning to work. And by early June, we expect all the CMLP employees will be back. But still have the ability to do remote work if needed. Broadband has installs have been on hold, but they're going to resume on May 3. They have a large backlog, as you can imagine, due to the pandemic, but this is good news, be resuming May 3. And they discussed the governor's signing of the climate legislation. And as most of you know, CMLP is well ahead of the game for meeting all the new requirements of this climate legislation. We met with the Capital Planning Task Force. We've been meeting every two weeks. And after several months of debate and discussion, I think we made a pretty big decision. And it was unanimous vote by the board. This is something we've been stuck on. And we came up with a compromise between a standing committee, a standing capital committee. And what we're calling the Enhanced Process, which is the capital planning we do now. For smaller projects would be also done for the large projects, but in enhanced way with, with specific signpost dates and public hearings. All of this is going to be coming in a report to the select board. In, by the end of the fiscal year, so coming pretty soon. This was probably our biggest decision and most difficult decision. And I'm probably going to recommend that the select board codify the, these. If, if, if the select board endorses it, but I don't want to get ahead of the game, but this will all be coming to you. So stay tuned. And then at CPW. The annual road program for maintenance is starting. The details are posted on the website and flyers have been distributed to the affected neighborhoods. Basically, we're talking about Warner Street, Park Lane, Lewis Road. Bedford Court, Partridge Lane, and then the Prescott Road neighborhood. And the Complete Streets Program is going to be working on Hubbard and Stowe Street and Sudbury Road. CPW has been busy installing outdoor dining setups for several establishments. And putting full equipment updates into the pump stations at the Assabit and Lowell Road stations. And at Nagog, there's some exciting work with the 16 inch diameter pipes being fused. And then launched into the pond. So as you know, this is a culmination of several years of planning. And long term, the projecting that we're going to need significant investments in our water infrastructure. Both at Nagog and possibly due to the PFAS treatment. So we'll be hearing more about that. I attended the League of Women Voters first Friday, where Stephen and our IT Director, Jason Bolger, were there. And he gave, he gave a very good talk that was very well received. Talked about a lot of objective measurements for how we're doing with cybersecurity and the cybersecurity national review that we're involved in. And Stephen, you were talking about pursuing the hybrid model for future public meetings, so that we could do both Zoom and in-person. And I'm hoping soon that we can hear some kind of a timeframe about, is that something that's going to happen maybe this summer? Or does anybody know yet when it might happen?
No, as you know, it's above our pay grade. The state legislature has to act before we, I think we can do it locally. My hope is very soon. They know it's an issue, we've mentioned it every time we talk to folks. I hope they're looking at it, but no, I have no idea.
Well, af, my question is, after the state votes, if they do, which I think everybody wants them to, in, in every town, what do we have to do locally, if anything?
I, I think that'll be, I, I'm going to, my assumption, and this is only an assumption based on past, you know, state initiatives, they'll write a statute that says, basically, they'll codify the emergency orders. And then each town can vote to adopt it at a future, at a town meeting. You know, I think that's probably how it would go. So, because, so, because not every town's going to want to do it that way. And so then we would have to, but they may do it by, they may do it from a regulatory standpoint. And I, I don't know, but I guess it would, but we talked about, and we're, the Transportation Advisory Committee is going to talk about speed limit, but we talked about the speed limit issue, how the state passed a law and then each town can vote to accept it. My guess is it's going to be something like that.
So if that happened, let's say they voted that in July, then what would happen between July and our next town meeting? We'd have to only meet in person or until the town meeting adopts it?
I don't know, they may, they may allow you to continue it, they may, it may be a select board. They may have a select board adopt that, I don't know.
All right, we'll wait and see. Okay, great. All right, and then to finish up on the library committee, the construction project is moving on well, still on time and on budget. Scheduled to open the children's library portion by the fall and the remaining areas by early next year. Library also has a sustainability plan that they've been working on, and they're going to be presenting it to the Select Board in May, maybe May 10th. And as Stephen said, they're working on the reopening, which is exciting. I think the details of the draft are in the packet. And the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail had a special meeting to review the 75% design plans for the last half mile, reviewing the details of the fencing, gates, landscaping with the abutters and with the White Pond Advisory Committee. So we're going to be hearing more about that. That's it.
Okay.
If I could just quickly add on the White Pond Advisory Committee front, this is definitely something that has caused numerous emails and a off-cycle meeting. And the determination by the MBTA that it, it was not going to include fencing initially in its planning for the trail on the, the abutting side to White Pond has a number of residents truly agitated, as, as do a number of the issues around the White Pond Management Plan for the beach and Sachem's Co. So stay tuned, that'll come up later. Not today, tonight, but later in this, in the spring.
All right, thank you, Jane. I'll just comment on the, oh, yes, Susan?
Oh, okay, did you want me to go or do you want?
Let me just say something real quick about the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. Not the, not the advisory committee, not the local Concord Advisory Committee, but the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail have just put out a new spring newsletter in which they mention Junction Park, the counting, asking for volunteers for counting and some other things. So if you have an opportunity to read that, I just want to suggest that you do so. Um, Susan, go ahead.
Okay. The Council on Aging met, and they're not certain about when they're going to be able to reopen, as, as is the case with many other parts of town. And they still are looking for one full and two associate members. So if that's of interest, please fill out a green card and, and they would love to, to have more membership. I did sit in, I, I think, I'm guessing this was Linda's committee, since no one's talked about it yet, but it was Junction Village Open Space Task Force a couple of days ago. And it was a fascinating, ground-laying kind of meeting for, for the group. They had David Wood, who's the curator of the Concord Museum, and Joel Boy, who's a revolutionary war historian, Rick Fries, who is also an historian, and Anka Volk from the library, to talk about the history of that piece of land, which is part of the parcel that the CHDC owns. And, and a part of it will be where the 83-unit affordable housing development will be. And this is the six-plus acres that is going to be open space. And so they're just now starting the committee to discuss what, how that process will go. But it was interesting, very interesting to me to hear the historical context of, of the land. The Planning Board met and there was, they discussed zoning parking requirements relative to the MAPC project of Thoreau Depot redevelopment project. And they talked about more article presentations, and the rest was fairly routine business. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I'll just add to Susan's comments about the Junction Village Open Space meeting last week. It was recorded by MMN, and I encourage you, as Susan did, to see that recording if you can. The history of the area is phenomenal. It was the largest three-day military mobilization activity in 1859. And was the, occurred just be, a month before the, the ferry event. So it's really significant in terms of the history of the Civil War. So it was well done, and hopefully everyone gets to see that. It just so happened that I also attended, this is going to sound like I had history on my mind this week, attended the Battle Road Scenic Byway Committee that met. And, you know, during this last year, 2A was federally proclaimed American Battle Road. And so, and we now have represent, and at our last Select Board meeting, we appointed three members from Concord that will officially represent us on that committee, vis-à-vis something that had been put in place by the Select Board a number of years ago. And so that committee is very interesting. It was BJ Dunn announced that he is retiring as superintendent of the National Parks and will be leaving in June. And they already have someone new coming in. That will be our liaison. And given that we are trying to seat going forward our 2026 Committee, Celebrations Committee, it, it's important that we form closer relationships with some of these committees and know what they're also doing, which is what our local representatives will be able to help us with. Jane?
I'm just surprised that BJ Dunn is leaving us so soon. It seems that it, like, that he just got here. Now, probably not to some of the, the Select Board members, but.
Yeah, I think it's been.
Select Board is longer than his with their National Park, and that, that is, that's too bad. I hope all is well.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Linda, I think you're about to say the same thing I was going to say.
I was just going to say, I, I think he's been here at least three years. And, you know, this may have been planned as part of his retirement.
Well, so to build on that, and I don't know what he said publicly, but I think one of the things that was on his mind was he wanted to give the next superintendent time to be fully engaged in the planning for the 250th. And so, and as you know, it takes time to transition to superintendent. So he wanted to make sure there's plenty of time for that, which honestly, I've only gotten to know BJ a little bit over the short time we worked together, but that is completely within character for him to be thinking about the needs of the park. Sort of almost ahead of his own, so I want to commend him and congratulate him.
Thank you. All right. And that concludes my report. Miscellaneous correspondence, I already spoke, there obviously is miscellaneous correspondence in the packet. And I already spoke to some of that earlier in this meeting. So are there any public comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.